Seventeenth, two thousand fifteen. If we can have the roll call, please.
Barbara Brenner.
Here.
Red Brown.
Here.
Barry Buchanan.
Here.
Pete Cremon.
Here.
Ken Mann.
Here.
Carl Wymer.
Here. If people will stand and join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, just a couple of quick announcements for those who have not attended in the past. If you have your cellphone with you, if you can put it on silence or turn it off so we don't hear lots of strange noises, that would be wonderful. If you're speaking during the public hearing or during the open session and you have anything to hand out to us, you can make sure that our clerk up front here gets a copy. That will make things easy also. Our first order of business this evening, it's a special order of business and it's the nomination and appointment to fill District Two, Position B, vacancy on the Watcomb County Council. We heard from all three applicants at our last meeting, and tonight we are going to hopefully elect one of them to join us up here.
Appoint.
Appoint one of them to join us up here. So, Mr. Mann.
I nominate Kathy Kirchner, Sap Paul Sidhu, and Jim Cozad.
All right, so all three folks have been nominated. Any discussion about the nominations? Ms. Brenner.
I'll say when she asked me to say, but I do want to emphasize that I've always -- well, and I spoke to all three candidates and they're all extremely qualified. I have to say that. I specifically said to all three of them that I would only support someone who is not going to run for county council because I don't believe in giving anybody a leg up on an election. Doesn't mean how I feel about them individually, and if I didn't feel they were all qualified, I would probably have to revisit that. But they all are, so that's my comment.
All right. Any other comments? Mr. Mann.
I just want to echo the sentiments that all three are qualified and I appreciate their willingness to serve and do the work on the county council, and they really all are excellent and qualified individuals. I appreciate their applying.
Anyone else? I certainly agree. I mean, it was a difficult decision because they all have qualifications, bring different things to the table. I'm glad there's only three of them to have to choose from and not forty-eight, but I think we're -- are we ready? Are you going to call through the names? All right.
Red Brown.
Sap Paul Sidhu.
Ken Mann.
Sap Paul Sidhu.
Barbara Brenner.
I also forgot to say, there was only one who said he was absolutely not going to run for county council, and that was Jim Cozad, and I'm voting for Jim Cozad.
Pete Cremon.
Sidhu.
Barry Buchanan.
Sap Paul Sidhu.
Carl Wymer.
Sidhu. And it looks like Mr. Sidhu has got the position. Five votes to one, with everybody voting for him with the exception of Ms. Brenner. Mr. Sidhu is not going to be joining us up here this evening because there's some administrative things he has to go through, like officially getting sworn in and all those types of things, but he will be joining us at the next meeting, I hope. Congratulations. Thank you very much. The best way to kind of get informed is if you want to call our office tomorrow and talk with Dana, she can get you the packet of information and help you get scheduled to get sworn in. My office is right across the street. Anytime you want to come and meet, I'm glad to walk you through too and, you know, show you where the water cooler is and stuff. That's about my level of sophistication.
Right, back here.
But congratulations, and we really thank the other two candidates for applying also. A couple other announcements. I just want to recognize someone in the audience. I've been sitting here for almost a year, and in the back there row, there's a gentleman and his son that sits here almost at every meeting, and I've started riding the bus with him, and his son's name is James. James, you want to just raise your hand? And he drags his dad to these meetings because he thinks government's interesting. So I think maybe a future county council member in the making here.
Yeah.
And appreciate that type of --
I think he's embarrassed.
That type of civic engagement. Also, we do a plug for one of our citizen boards or committees that has openings, and tonight I'm going to do a plug for the Noxious Weed Control Board. There's two vacancies on that board. I didn't look to see what the vacancies are. A lot of the vacancies require that you're related to ag somehow or another, but if you go on our website, you can check out that board and all the other ones that have openings. We really need more citizens to get involved with those advisory committees. We're going to move right on to our first public hearing, which is a public hearing on a resolution regarding Community Development Block Grant Funding Report and a New Application. And our clerk is going to go get the sign-in sheet, and then we can open the public hearing. Just as she's back there getting to see who wants to speak to this this evening, I can do the ground rules. Anybody that wants to speak on this will get a chance this evening, whether you signed in or not. I'll go through the signup sheet first. Each person will get three minutes to speak. When you get down to about thirty seconds left, you'll get a warning that your time's about up. And if, as you come up to speak, if your name's more complicated than Smith &amp; Jones, if you can spell it for us, that really helps for the public record. Looks like there's two people that are -- have signed up this evening, so I'm going to open the public hearing. And Sherry Emerson and Paul Schisler are the two that have signed up.
Thank you. It's not Smith or Jones, but Emerson is pretty easy to pronounce, so thank you for that. That's the first thank you. The second thank you is for the council for approving the CDBG grant last year. This is a somewhat of a renewal. We do go through this process every year and appreciate Watcomb County administering this community development block grant. It helps us provide services in the rural areas of Watcomb County. Specifically in Watcomb County, it provides services out at the East Watcomb Regional Resource Center, and I'm here to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions? Looks like we're good.
Not for you.
Not for me.
No.
You're off the hook.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. Mr. Schisler. And anybody that wants to speak after Paul certainly can come down and get ready, and anybody that wants a chance, we'll get a chance.
Thank you, Paul Schisler, Bellingham resident. I just wanted to take the opportunity to say that this is a very important role for the county to play to help bring in non-local matching funds and then pass those through to local projects. So the county's been very good about working together with partners in the community, both public and private sector partners, to use funding like this. It's actually federal in origin, but it comes to the state of Washington, and it's very competitive, but you can compete for this funding, and Skagit County's done a good job competing for that funding. In fact, the East Watcomb Regional Resource Center was built partly with that community development block grant, annual competition funding. So this annual opportunity to help rural Watcomb County with the pass-through funds Opportunity Council is a program I think that works really well. And there are also other opportunities for the county to apply for and bring in additional matching grants from Department of Commerce, from the community development block grant program there. So that's the kind of thing I'm always on the lookout for. I wanted to bring your attention to the possibility that that funding can be used for housing affordability in addition to the other uses you've used, you've put it to. And I'm doing some work for Skagit County where they're also looking at the possible use of this kind of funding for land acquisition for housing that's affordable for homebuyers using the existing homebuyer assistance programs in Skagit County. The same thing could be done in Watcomb County, so it's a golden opportunity, I think, if we can work together with another county and with the nonprofit agencies, the private nonprofits that are putting together the funding to make homes affordable, we could do a lot more of the kind of sweat equity projects in Ferndale and actually inside Bellingham as well. So golden opportunity for tonight. It's great that the county would consider accepting this additional funding, and I'd be totally supportive of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else this evening want to speak to us about this community block grant? Seeing no one else, I'm going to close the public hearing. What's the wishes of the council?
Move approval.
Okay, Mr. Buchanan has moved approval. Ms. Brenner.
Yeah, I have one question. It's on the last paragraph of the -- is it a resolution? Yeah, the resolution. And I think our executive is a wonderful executive, but the problem here is it says Watcomb County designates Jack Laus County Executive as the official administrative -- Chief Administrative Official and Authorized Representative to act in all official matters in connection with this application and with Watcomb County's participation in the Washington State CDBG program. I'm assuming that to mean for the term of the contract or whatever it is. And your term is up this year, so it's going to be like partway through, and I don't know if you're running again. I don't know what's going to happen, but I'm thinking maybe it would be better just to say "the county executive." That's my amendment, just because...
This is County Executive Laus. I don't know whether there's specific language coming through the feds, whether or not it needs to have a name designation on it, as it was when I took over for former Executive Cremon. A lot of documents came through, but as the elected official in that position, I just assumed the signatory of the grant applications that he had moved it forward. So I don't believe it's a big deal, but I have no problem with the council removing my name and just designating the county executive as the authorized chief administration -- administrative official on this. That's your decision.
Yeah, it's definitely not personal. I just thought because it's -- there's changing of the guard potentially, and that's my motion is to --
Okay, say "I move," and then tell us what you're doing.
I move to change the language in the last paragraph to read Watcomb County designates "the county executive."
Okay, so that's the motion in front of us?
The last paragraph of what?
Page 202 of our packet. Any discussion? I think I'm going to vote against that just because I don't know whether a name's required, and I don't think it's going to be a big problem even if Mr. Laus doesn't win reelection this fall, because it's a resolution and it certainly could be changed if we need to. Any other discussion?
I agree with Mr. Wymer.
All right, we have the motion in front of us. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
No. So that fails four to two with Councilmember Brenner and Cremon in favor. We have the whole resolution in front of us. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, we are on to our public open session. This is where members of the public can come down and address us for three minutes on whatever you like. We can line up both microphones, work. We go in whatever order, people show up first. So anybody that wants to speak to us this evening, now is your time. Just like with the hearings, you have three minutes and you'll get a warning when there's about thirty seconds left.
Good evening, Kathy Bovencamp, ten twenty, Brighton Crest Lane. I was here this afternoon for the Public Works Committee. Thank you to Councilmembers Brennan, Cremon, and Mann for putting that on the agenda. There was a group of citizens from the Chuckanet Crest, Brighton Crest Beach Association, and Chuckanet Community Bay Association here expressing interest in turning the Yacht Club Road Crossing into a quiet zone, and really appreciate your time, that you listen to us. It would be a huge benefit to our community out there, not to mention to a good night's sleep, as the train traffic has really increased and the number of trips have increased, and we would be super excited to work together with the county, doing fundraising or participating however we can to get the project going. So thank you, and I ask for your support for the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Bob Earl, E A R L. I'm a resident of Chucknut Drive, one of the citizens that you just heard about that is listening to the train whistles and all the train noise, and I just wanted to express my support too to what Ms. Brennan and the committee did this afternoon and hope that the council will support that as we explore the possibility of doing a quiet zone for Yacht Club Road. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, come on, more than two people must have something to tell us.
Wow, this is a record maybe. Pat.
Patrick, what is wrong?
Young men were there. Looked good. Standing part of the whole evening.
All right.
Well, you're talking now.
All right, I'm going to close the open session, and we're going to move on to our regular business.
I was just going to say, where's Greg Brown when you need him?
He's here.
Oh, there he is.
Okay, in front of us is our consent agenda from Finance and Administrative Services. Mr. Brown.
Mr. Chair, thank you very much. The Finance Committee met today, and we discussed items one through three on the consent agenda, and all of them were approved with a three-zero vote. I therefore recommend approval.
Okay. Consent agenda's been moved for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Other items from Finance.
Mr. Chair, there was a resolution setting hearing and notice of hearing of the sale of county tax title property by negotiation, request number TR-2015-01. The committee met, discussed it, and recommended three-zero for approval. I say move.
All right. We have that motion in front of us. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair, resolution setting hearing and notice of sale of county tax title property by negotiation, request number TR-2015-02, was discussed and it also received a vote of three-zero from the committee in favor, and I say move.
All right, another motion to sell some property. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Public Works.
We had a resolution to approve a change to the color of the road name signs, and we had beautiful examples of all the pretty signs, and we voted to accept -- to recommend accepting the one that is black on white, which is the least expensive, and instead of doing it all at one time, these would happen as the signs need to be replaced, and that's my recommendation.
Okay, so we have the resolution to accept the new black and white signs as they need to be replaced? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. We have an appointment of the Solid Waste Advisory Committee from the Waste Collection Industry Representative, and the applicant is Troy Lottenbach.
I'll move approval, and he's done a great job already.
Ms. Brenner has moved approval of this appointment. Any discussion? I know Troy, and he's a -- he'll be a great member of the committee. I think he's been on the committee before. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Executive appointments to boards. We have a request for confirmation of the county executive's reappointments to various executive boards and committees.
Mr. Chair, I will move approval of all the recommendations from the executive.
All right, so we have a motion to confirm the executive's appointment -- reappointments and appointments. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those pass unanimously. We are already on to our introduction items.
Wow.
Mr. Mann.
So I move we accept introduction items one through six, pointing out that item number two, the marijuana production, processing, and retailing ordinance is a substitute ordinance in your orange.
It's butterscotch, according to my --
Oh, butterscotch. Excuse me. And the committee, we discussed this in Planning Committee today, and just to let you know what the changes are that came out of committee that are being introduced now, just so you're all aware of it in case you didn't get to read this yet, we removed rural residential and rural residential island as areas where you can do production and processing, and we recommended removal of the resort commercial zone as a place where you could do retail. And other than that, the changes are as indicated in the staff memo, and we approve moving it forward as I just described, three to zero.
All right, so we have all six introduction items in front of us, including the butterscotch version. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those pass unanimously. We are on to other committee reports. Was there anything from Natural Resources?
Yes, Mr. Chair, just one short thing. We had a presentation from Futurewise this morning on the GreenLinks program, which basically takes a lot of the water issues, other natural resources issues such as wildlife, and integrates that into the planning process, into the comprehensive planning process. We heard from staff in what the administration's willing to commit as far as information. I think this discussion is going to continue, so I would look forward to taking that up again at a future date.
All right, anything else from Finance?
Nothing else from Finance.
Anything else from Planning?
No, sir, that's it.
Public Works.
Yes, we came up with a resolution, or just a recommendation. The council request -- this is a recommendation. The council requests the administration to engage Burlington Northern to determine necessary safety improvements and develop a preliminary cost estimate to develop a process to create a quiet zone. And what we were told, and it sounded like it, I mean, our Public Works people agree that it can be done, we were told that Burlington Northern will come up and do a non-engineered estimate of what it will cost and how it'll be done, and they will work with Watcomb County Public Works staff. And what I want to say is, I mean, I personally was so completely impressed by the people from the area, and they're, you know, they're offering, and I think it's great to help put up quite a bit of the money to do all the work that needs doing. So this is kind of like a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity when you get people together that are willing to do that, and I'm real impressed with the group, so that's the motion.
All right. Motion to move forward, asking our Public Works Administration and Public Works to move forward on the idea of --
It's a request.
Request our --
We can't make them do it.
-- Administration and Public Works to move forward to engage Burlington Northern to determine necessary safety improvements and develop a preliminary cost estimate to develop a process to create a quiet zone. And this is out along Chuckanet. Any discussion of the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. We are just in a unanimous mood this evening.
Well, no, I voted aye.
Any other business items from anyone? Mr. Brown.
Mr. Chair, in my position as the council's representative of the Flood Control Zone Committee, I wanted to bring to your attention the thing I've just sent down to you. Unfortunately, this will come up at the next surface water work session discussion, and I won't be able to attend, but I just wanted to convey my sentiment on this. This is the prioritization for the projects for this year for cost share programs. I just wanted to express that I'm fully supportive of all these. I think they're the right things to focus on, and in particular, the two in the middle, Option One, Option Two, listed for the De Bea or De Boer Culvert Gate, went out to the site, and that really needs to be fixed if currently it's probably flooding three hundred-plus acres of land when the river's up, and it's exactly what we're supposed to be doing with this money. So that was my first comment on the flood control, and the second was that the, when we went through the voting for the annual selection of people to serve on that committee, I found myself in a difficult position of having to select someone, Scott Hulse, to -- because I wanted him to represent, have an opportunity to represent the Birch Bay District, but that was at the expense of another member who'd been on the committee for some time, which was unfortunate, because I think he'd been, he'd done good service, and that was Harry Williams. So I've suggested to the committee, but that was unfortunate, the only way we could do it, I've suggested to the Flood Control Zone Committee that they come back with a recommendation as to whether we can alter the structure of the committee a bit to allow for broader participation, because it's got a very good team of people on, and I'd like to make sure we get to keep everybody who wants to serve.
All right, thanks for your update, and this, these have been through the committees. They have a rating team that works on this.
Correct. And these, I can't remember, I think this got unanimous approval from the committee.
Okay, good. We're going to be talking about this on Tuesday at our surface water work session. Any other, other business? Ms. Brenner.
I think this is under other business. I just want to give a shout-out to the Planning Department. They put together critical area ordinance videos, and I, they're better than most of the people you see on television. I mean, it was so entertaining. It was amazing. So if anybody else gets a chance to look at those videos, I had no idea we had such talented people at planning.
All right, but those are about wetlands, weren't they?
Well, yeah, but critical areas --
The other things, too.
Yeah, but mostly the wetlands, but you, where do you see the frog guy and the sort of Superman guy?
So it's our staff starring in these?
It's the Planning Department staff, and they are very incredible, and it's going to be up on our website.
Yeah, and that gives me the chance to mention that we do have a new website up this week too, and if you haven't checked it out, you should. It's a, it's a major upgrade from our old website, same address, so you can go there and poke around, and it's really starting to create the platform where we can host things like videos that in the past we haven't been able to, so I'm glad we've got some good entertaining ones to put up there.
Can I, another business one, sort of? We got MRS, yeah, Municipal Research, whatever their acronym is. We got a recent addition of it, and I attended a meeting of elected officials last week on the GMA, and especially about housing. The cities were talking about housing and stuff, and I brought, I think I was bringing it up a little too much, but I am very passionate about accessory dwelling units, i.e. mother-in-law cottages or whatever you want to call them, those little teeny extra dwellings on property. And I was amazed and encouraged to see in the municipal research information they sent us today, there's a huge, a whole, you know, really well-done column on why they're such a great idea and why they're so important for infill and retrofitting, and I've got great ideas about how to make them work, and I want to just put this on the record. And my favorite idea is that the county and cities, all their planning departments have engineered off-the-shelf five or six different designs, so neighborhoods can't say no. They can say, "We don't want that or that, and we want this or this," like early American, Victorian, modern, different designs that are, you know, and it would save the people money, but once they keep coming in and doing it, it would eventually pay back the cost to the county. And I just think, you know, putting, allowing those and encouraging them and incentivizing them is going to create the kind of growth that we want in areas where we want growth, and it's not going to be, it's going to be, you know, a blessing to the neighborhood, not a curse.
All right, any other business?
That was sort of business.
Well, yeah, I don't know where the line is.
Well, that was about growth and growth, man, you know.
I'm not disagreeing with you.
Okay.
All right, council member updates. Let's start at that end. Mr. Brown. Mr. Buchanan.
I do want to talk a little bit. We have the large project we're all working on, which is a jail, and lately I've been just reaching out to various other members of the law enforcement and criminal justice community in realizing what a huge part of criminal justice, mental health is, and I'm very appreciative that we have a mental health court, which is ramping up. And I sit on our North Sound Mental Health Administration Board in my role as council member, and I brought this up with them, and they are very interested in helping us in Up Counties, in the five-county area, to work on solutions to the criminal justice system and mental health. You see articles all the time, National Association of Counties -- You see articles all the time, National Association of Counties magazines, how jails are becoming essentially, you know, our last-ditch mental health institutions, and it's not right and it doesn't work, it's not humane. And I think the North Sound Mental Health Administration is really interested in working with us to come up with some funding, possibly to operate, or to contribute to the operations of a crisis center or a mental health crisis center. And I'm going to have their executive director, he's coordinating with Ann Deacon from the Health Department, and they're going to come and give us a presentation and hopefully give us some guidance about what we can do, possibly if we do the capital spending on building a facility, they can help provide the funding for operations. And it's still very preliminary, but just wanted to let you all know to pay attention, because that meeting hopefully will come up in the next couple of weeks, and just also let the executive and his staff know that that's something that I'm thinking about.
Great, that's good news. I just wanted to mention, I'm the liaison, I'm on the board of the Northwest Clean Air Agency, and this past week we gave out our awards for Clean Air, and I'm glad to announce that Tony's Coffee in Fairhaven got the platinum award of the three-county region for going well above and beyond what they're required to do to reduce both odors and air pollution and their energy use. So there are only one of those a year given out, and I think Wachem County has got them two the last three years, and this year it was Tony's, so congratulations to Tony's in Fairhaven. Ms. Brenner.
I just want to, you know, and sort of continue what Councilmember Mann brought up. We had a discussion on mental health and criminal justice and the new jail, you know, and this was in the Behavioral Health Advisory Committee. I want, when you have that presentation, I'd like to know about...
We're all going to be invited.
Oh, okay, good. Well, anyway, I think, you know, what we're doing, what we're trying is going to be really productive and really helpful. My biggest concern is this whole thing of what people think the last one-tenth of one percent sales tax was about. And I hear from people all the time, "Well, we already did that." And I think we need, you know, that the people who are going to be putting this out need to do a very good job of information specifically on numbers, on what we have accomplished with that one-tenth of one percent, for one thing, but also what we need and why we need it. I'm a little nervous about the, you know, having it at the August primary ballot, and then if that doesn't work, doing it again. I would rather people feel empowered and part of this whole process, you know, all the way along, and I'm not, I don't feel like even I've been given a lot of information yet, but I know there's a lot of good information out there. So I feel like what we could end up doing is not only having a much better jail, but also doing a whole lot of diversion. There's all kinds of ideas that we talked about at Monday's meeting, so, yeah.
All right, Mr. Kremen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Haven't said much tonight. I want to report to my colleagues and to everyone else that I've been working with the Washington State Association of Counties and their staff transportation analyst on some legislation that's going through the state legislature, a Senate bill that deals with ferries and funding for ferries, and it'd be the three counties in Washington State that run their own ferry system, it would be Pierce, Skagit, and Wachem Counties having access to a sizable pot of money that we are able to use. Currently, the existing Senate bill has language that prevents us from changing the fee structure. And I know that the Lummi Island Ferry Advisory Committee is making recommendations, and I think there's some desire on the part of that committee to alter or modify some of the fee structures, not enormously, but there are some tweaks that are desired, and that's coming forward, if it hasn't already, from the Lummi Island Ferry Advisory Committee. And so I'm working with the WASAC staff to change the current language that would give us the flexibility or latitude to modify that language. The language we came up with says that by, it has to be in place by July 1st. And so I just want to put you on notice that if we want to, now, this is providing, the bill passes and providing the bill adopts the language that, that changes the date, the current date would be January of this year. And that's why I want to change that language so that it gives us that latitude to make some adjustments with the fee structure. And so if that passes with the language that we like, that will give us the ability to make the kind of changes that are being recommended by the advisory committee that we appointed. So just want to let you know that we're working on that, and hopefully we'll get that in the form that we desire, and we'll have access to some funding that we need and would like to have, so.
That's good news too, so did I understand right that you're trying to change the language so we have till July 1st?
Yes.
So we would have to jump on it and...
That's why, I actually, I actually talked with staff and said, "Is there any way we can make that?" Because I know how the council works. And I said, "Is it possible to get it September 1st?" He says, "Well, that's a real push." And I said, "Well, okay, well, I'll settle for when the new fiscal year starts, which is July 1st." So, you know, it's still better than the existing language, which basically prevents us from making any modifications at all in the fee structure. So technically, it isn't a fee that's desired, it's the surcharge, if you'll recall, that the council implemented. And I don't know if we're going to be able to do those kinds of language gymnastics and still be able to get by the state auditor. So this is as clean as we could get it, and it does give us, you know, a few months to make the modifications that are being recommended by the Ferry Advisory Committee. So hopefully we'll get that in the form that we desire and be able to, you know, make the adjustments that we want.
Hopefully they'll pass it before June 25th.
I think they will. They may go into special session this year, but I think they'll definitely be done by the end of May, you know. They may get done on time, but as you well know, there's a real division in the legislature now, and it wouldn't surprise me if they go into special session.
Ms. Brenner.
Yeah, I've been attending the Lummi Island Ferry Advisory Committee meetings, and I didn't realize the WASAC was doing that, which is so great. The, there was just two words in the amendment for the Lummi Island Ferry Advisory Committee, or, yeah, which was exempting surcharges. And I wrote to our legislators, our delegation, and they were very receptive, so if other council members would write to them, it would be great. I know that some of the islanders are too.
Right, okay. Anything else for the good of the order? We are adjourned.